Okay, we're gonna call the mean to order. It is Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, number. Okay. Minutes of reports received and filed?
Yes, we did. I have the county first, March 2024 fees, the auditor's March 2024 revenue and expenditure report, and the recorder's March 2024 fees.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, looks like there's a blood drive today at the YMCA, so if you have some extra blood you wanna give, I'll be out there around 1:30. Hopefully mine's still good enough. Board of Realtors, they have a major in political action investor meeting tonight. I'll be doing a county update for them. Thursday, Cole County Communities in the morning, Cole County Extension and Lines in the evening, and then hopefully we get the proclamation together to present to the Blair Oaks Archery Team, our state champions. Friday morning, Eastside Business Association meeting. I'll be doing another county update at the Chamber for their Government Committee. Saturday's Cattlemen's Banquet in Wardsville. MAC Board Meeting Monday, and then the MAC Legislation Day is Tuesday. And then it's spring youth turkey hunting season, so Sam, you may want to hide.
Doc, sorry.
I don't have much to add to that, except Westside Business Association on Thursday.
Okay, I have, uh, Wednesday, the Chamber has their talent campaign kickoff at the Financial Center at 4:30. Uh, we've got Communities on Thursday. Then our 250th Birthday Committee has a meeting at 5:00 PM on Thursday night. Friday, we have a meeting at Health Department. Sunday, Historic City of Jefferson and Stacy and where, where?
Where did Eric?
Eric, go. They're having a luncheon, so I'm going to that. And then the reception Monday night, the MAC receptions from 6:00 to 9:00 at Millbottom. That is all I have. Any Commission comments? Bids and contracts. Approval of agreement for professional engineering services, stormwater management program assistance.
Miss America. Let's get down to Christie if you want.
Well, we can do Christie then. Health Department to discuss SHI and CDWG equipment quotes.
Good morning. Oh, we skipped Joe, sorry.
You lost out, sorry. You get moved down.
So, we were just looking to upgrade a little bit more equipment. A couple of people need new scanners for their desk, and our color printers are old, a couple docking stations, power strips and cables. We worked with Brian to get quotes off the contracts. He's hiding over there. And this will all come out of the ELC ED contract, no cost to the county.
I'm fine with it. You emailed that all to us.
Right.
We'll chance review it, so.
Yeah, the total is, um, yeah, a little over $4,000, so we wanted to bring it to you for your approval. Good?
Yes.
I don't think there's anything to sign, so Brian will just get the order done. Thank you. Do you need to load on it? I don't know if we're gone.
Have Jessica do the purchase orders to those two vendors then.
You got it? Okay. Oh, yeah, I got you, too.
Okay. We're all okay with it. Okay, you wanna go back? We'll go back to Eric. Approval of agreement for professional engineering services, stormwater management program assistance.
I apologize. Eric actually told me he had to take an important phone call and asked me to move down the agenda, so that was my fault.
Yeah, thanks, John, appreciate that. Okay, so, um, we contract with Lubert Engineering to do stormwater management, uh, engineering and related services. This is a pretty much an on-call contract. It'll last until the money's, um, money runs up. The last one we did was 2021, and so the services in this agreement are for annual reporting to Missouri Department of Natural Resources for our MS4 permit, urbanized boundary determination, provide training to comply with requirements, review and update the stormwater pollution prevention plan for our facilities, and then review and update the spill prevention, control and countermeasures plan for our facilities as well, and then general assistance for stormwater design review. So, I would ask approval of this agreement with Lubert Engineering in the amount of $16,000.
I'll make a motion to, um, sign the agreement for professional engineering services with Lubert Engineering for $16,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bid award and signing of contract for 2024 pavement preservation seal program.
So, this contract is with Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC in the amount of $112,525.35. It's our annual pavement preservation seal program that applies a rejuvenator to the previous year's paved or overlaid pavements as part of the pavement preservation program to extend the life of our pavements. The contract is a cooperative procurement piggyback contract off the city and Moverly's bid.
Matt, have we identified which, uh, streets are gonna be affected by this?
Yes, it'd be everything that we overlaid last year. So, it'd be Rock Ridge Road, South Ridge Court, Foxfire Lane, Saddle Brook Lane, Schumate Chapel Road, Lesch Road, and then Lucia Court, Lucia Drive, North Port Drive, West Port Drive, and Willoughby Drive, all in the West Port area.
This is the kind of treatment where we'll get a few phone calls about the sand? Is this?
Probably.
Yes.
Okay, so.
But I do have a letter that I am planning on sending to any of the property owners that have on-street parking, and then we will put a thing out on our Facebook and website as soon as I know their schedule of when they'll be in town.
Okay. Yeah, there, there will be calls that say, uh, was this a mistake? It's sandy, it's dusty, it's?
What they do is they'll spray Reclamite down, and then they cover it with a sand or an ag lime, just to help soak everything up, usually within a half an hour to an hour after they apply everything. It's safe to drive on, and so.
And the good response is this extends the life of that pavement by years?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they found that within the first year after a road is paved, you lose a lot of the asphaltines and the microscopic stuff in the asphalt, so this just reapplies it and helps seal everything back off to make it last longer.
Okay.
Who's the engineer here, Sheriff?
All right, make a motion to award and sign the contract with 2024 pavement preservation seal program with corrective asphalt materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't have to initial each page, do I?
No, sir.
Good. Uh, signing of Huber and Associates contract in reference to Interpol licenses.
So, currently, we have New World. Interpol is the, is the RMS system, the Port Management System that we had before. What this is, it's $4,100 to be able to keep 10 licenses, uh, so we can go back and access the data. If we try to do the, if we try to do conversion, it costs money and it causes complications. So, I think for $4,100 a year, it keeps us 10 licenses, and we don't have to do the conversion and stuff, so it's a good plan, and it's approved by Brian.
What's it in your budget?
Uh, no, I have to, this is all part of the data project. We never would have moved this stuff over.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to sign the Huber and Associates contract in the amount of $4,100. Far. The Huber and Associates I have. And once again, what's the simple name for what they're doing? Or the?
Interpol licenses.
The Interpol License Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just keep giving him the easy ones.
Okay, discussion and approval of MMEA engineers proposal.
This is the proposal with the engineers to oversee the HVAC project in the Annex Building. He will do site visits once or twice a week as necessary, and then coordinate meetings with the contractor and the county every two weeks. He's proposing $100 an hour for site visits and reports with a do not exceed of $12,000. And then if this is route you guys decide you wanna take, I have a proposal to sign, and Joe has approved it. And he is the engineer that did all the drawings for the RFP.
Yeah, what's the total project price on that?
On the HVAC system? Yeah.
1.2 million?
Yeah.
So, it's a, it's a pretty big project, so pretty important to make sure it gets done right. So, I'm okay with it.
So am I.
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve and sign the MMEA engineers proposal for providing the engineering services for the Cole County Courthouse Annex Building HVAC upgrades.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review.
I will ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
This, this week, you're not kidding, right?
I'm not kidding.
Yesterday was April Fool's, so.
Yeah, that's the last.
Well, are you just behind?
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Eric, before, I'm gonna go ahead and move Locke up ahead of you, can I?
Actually, you put me at the very end if you want. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz this is.
I think, aren't you doing jury selection still, so?
Uh, well, actually, that's, that's done. They just started their openers over there, so Eric can go ahead.
Oh.
This'll take 10, 15 minutes, so if you wanna run through everything else.
Mine might take a little bit as well, so.
Okay, flip a coin, Matt. Go ahead, Matt.
You guys are both gonna argue like this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So, um, we put this item on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. It's the annual stormwater update. It's required that we do this through our MS4 permit with Missouri Department of Natural Resources. That is municipal separate storm sewer system. That's what that stands for. Coincidentally, we had a big storm last night, so I'll give you a little quick update on that. Had nothing to do with the fact that this was on the agenda, but very timely. So, um, county got hit pretty hard. A lot of, there's kind of a ban that kinda went kinda southwest part of the county to towards Wardsville, Taux area. Didn't get too much into the city area, more a little south. We got, had some pipes floated up. It can happen, but it's not too common. The Moro, South Moro especially, is flooded out of its banks. A lot of low water bridges are closed right now. There should be a pressure release coming out soon, if, if it's not already out on that. A lot of cleaning streets, checking inlets and everything. That's just what we normally do after we have these storms. We had so much hail on Tanner Bridge that we actually brought a mortar grader out to plow it. So, yeah, it's, when it gets that bad, you know it's quite a bit upwards of maybe even baseball-sized hail in some areas. So, pretty big storm. It all kinda came through right there about 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock or so, and, um, did quite a bit of, I don't know if we have a whole lot of damage necessarily, but there are some pisar replays. One road down around Enon is closed. We had a pipe washout down there, and then some other pipes where it's passable, but we'll have to have some barricades around until we can get to fix it. So, um, it's, it's that time of year, and we deal with these things. It's not uncommon. We just prepare it, and when it happens, we go deal with it. So, if, if anything outstanding comes up, we'll let you know, but, um, as far as, as far as we know right now, it's pretty much just normal occurrences with these types of storms. So, I'll get into the, the update. So, a couple of things we'll go over, and then at the end, kinda talk about just general things we encounter when working with citizens regarding stormwater. So, as I said earlier, we're, we're required to do a, basically just a review, give you an update on, on how things are and how our permit's doing and what we're doing with that. So, uh, with our permit, we're, we have to track calls that come in and, and different things we do related to stormwater management. And, uh, we do have a stormwater management advisory committee, and that's actually a subset of the Road and Bridge Advisory Board. And so, they meet, the board meets four times a year. The committee actually conducts a meeting twice a year, uh, May and November, and that was set up, again, uh, as directed by Missouri Department of Natural Resource to, resources to have a committee, in which it'll give citizens an avenue if, if they have an issue. Maybe they're not getting the answer they want from us, or maybe it's a bigger issue that we can't address and maybe need some advisory or some, you know, advice on how to handle. That committee is there for that, and we've had two items come before that committee, but none came last year. So, pretty, pretty rare that it gets to that point. Usually, when calls come in, we just address them, and they're, they're things that we can handle, either through general maintenance items or through projects that we have ongoing to update stormwater facilities. So, calls that, we do track calls that come in, and that's all tracked in Cartograph, and we had 26 last year, nine, or 17 for drainage and flooding issues, eight clogged or failed culvert pipes, and then one elicited discharge, and that's like, you know, hazardous waste or something being dumped in the streams. Not that it was necessarily, but you get a call, somebody's concerned that there's a sheen on the water in their creek or something. We have to go check that if it's within, and I should've mentioned it. So, the MS4 permit applies to a certain area. It's called the, um, urbanized area, and it's an area pretty much around Jefferson City, and then we've added a, a buffer around it, too. So, I, I didn't bring a map of that, but it's online for citizens. They can see what that map is and areas that we have to regulate stormwater. We also issue public service announcements. We do those quarterly. Put that on Facebook, and then we track the amount of views and engagements. Stormwater permits, so a couple of years ago, we, um, implemented our stormwater ordinance, and that is to, uh, manage, and we, again, this is required by DNR that we have this, and it is to, to manage stormwater runoff or just stormwater in general from a development of, um, or land disturbance of one acre or greater. And it usually applies, in our case, to residential developments, and, um, we have only had, and this actually was, um, the agreement was signed with Trademark Property Management, Boxwood Lane. It's a little development off of Ravenwood Drive, and it was done in, actually, late '22. So, we didn't have any in '23, and so, and what that says is either, A, uh, the developments are happening outside the MS4 boundary. Uh, we have several in the Wardsville area, and that's actually outside of our boundary that we have to manage through the DNR permit. We still require stormwater detention and, and everything like we would, but we just don't have to have the permit because of what DNR requires. And then some that were grandfathered in had started before the ordinance went into place, and so we're working through what our previous requirements were. Uh, we do manage construction sites regularly, inspect those. We had two last year, and there was 49 inspections performed. No enforcement actions were needed, and these also include sites that we're doing ourselves, too. So, we have to inspect our own projects as well as development projects. Getting into some of the projects we have ongoing, are, are ongoing or in the future. So, uh, in 2007, we did our first really stormwater project, and so that's getting close to, you know, 15-plus years ago, and at that time, we started to identify some of these older subdivisions where pipes and inlets were becoming deteriorated and needed to be addressed. And so, the first one we did was in 2007, and then since, since then, we've done, it seems like, Matt, we got at least one or two going a year, either under construction or in design, and so it's been a regular, um, process or, or thing that we're doing out of the sales tax. And in some cases, we've gotten some grant funds to do it. Uh, I don't have an exact number, but it's hundreds of inlets and miles of pipe that we've done, probably upwards of 400 inlets and upwards of maybe 10 miles of pipe total to improve stormwater in the county. Current projects we have right now, South Brooks Drive Phase 3, that's at the very end of South Brooks, the end of Westview Heights area. It includes a detention basin that we're working on the upper end of that, um, that project. We also have a complete, uh, reconstruction of the Lakewood subdivision off of Route C and CC area, and that'll include, uh, and when we do stormwater improvement projects, especially in a subdivision, it includes not only just replacing what's deteriorated, but also making sure we're addressing capacity. We'll, we'll, especially in some of these older, older subdivisions, older areas of town, uh, back when they were built in the, you know, 50 years ago or so, the county didn't have any kind of regulations, design standards weren't what they are today, and a lot of these, um, stormwater facilities weren't put in to adequately address stormwater. So, any project we do takes care of all that to eliminate any concerns that people have with stormwater or flooding in their, in their residential kinda isolated areas. A small project on Vile of View, um, this is to add some inlets and kinda correct a, um, a section of street that doesn't have curb and gutter leading into that, to that road, and then, and, and with that, we're gonna do an overlay of that, that street as well this year. Anytime we're doing an overlay of a subdivision street, a residential area, we make sure all the stormwater pipes and inlets are all up to, up to standard. So, in some cases, it requires a little bit lengthy process to, to get all that done. Case in point, the Lakewood subdivision, we've been meeting and visiting with the residents out there, probably upwards of maybe two to three years. They know the project's coming, and they understand that we can't just go overlay. We gotta make sure we fix everything underneath first. Uh, there's a couple little individual small pipe replacements due to failed pipes or deteriorated pipes, Briar Village, and then Glenstone Court. And then, uh, as we talked about, had a presentation about maybe a month ago, three weeks ago, on the ARPA, ARPA stormwater runoff control projects. These are ongoing, and we would have projects to bid out and award by the end of the year to meet the ARPA requirements. These are primarily Westview and, uh, Patchy Flats, Notches, Trace, Henwick areas. So, those projects are ongoing. Future projects we've looked at, uh, the Randall Drive, I think it's actually Holiday Haven is the subdivision name, but I, we call it the Randall Drive subdivision, um, off of Scott Station Road. Completely upgrading all those stormwater pipes and inlets. Back in '21, we had quite a bit of flooding out there, and so, uh, it, this'll be a full upgrade, everything in the whole subdivision, and then file that up with overlays, uh, the year or two after. And then you all might get some, uh, phone calls on Scruggs Station Road. Uh, that road's in very poor condition, but we have to upgrade all the stormwater first before we upgrade the road. So, that's, uh, on, we have, we don't have, we don't have a project under design yet, but it'll likely be next year. And then Shear Drive, that's another one. We'll replace all the facilities on Shear Drive. And so, in doing all those, um, there'd be a few areas, um, and actually, this, the Scruggs Station will also encompass a few smaller areas in the Westview Heights subdivision area. So, when all that's done, uh, Westview Heights will be fully updated as far as stormwater goes. So, uh, a lot, a lot of stuff, a lot of projects, um, takes a lot of time. Most of them, we, we hire consultants to do. They're just too big for us to do in-house. Uh, the Briar Village in Glenstone, we actually, those are small, just single pipes, and we can design those, survey, design, and, and put those plans out ourselves. And, uh, a couple of things towards the end, um, maybe timely for what we had last night. So, I think it's important to point out what the county maintenance responsibility is versus the homeowner or the property owner responsibility. We get calls, and I'll kinda go through a few towards the end. But generally speaking, and I got it listed here, the county is responsible for any stormwater facility on county maintained right-of-way. So, that's street, uh, anything within the street, that includes inlet pipes, and the curb and gutter, uh, that's part of the stormwater conveyance system. And then inlets, junction boxes, and pipes in drainage easements draining to or away from the street. And so, you might have a junction box kinda in the middle of some properties, kinda towards the back, that collects stormwater. It's connected in a pipe to the, to the inlet in the street. That's part of our system, too. And then pipes and boxes and all that that leave the system, lead, lead, leading away from a, from a street. So, we maintain all of that. Anything that's connected to our stormwater conveyance system, if it touches our system, we're gonna maintain it unless there's some agreement or whatever that we don't. But more often than not, we will. And then inlet and outlet areas of pipes and culverts. So, usually, mostly on the outlet side, you'll get some erosion where water leaves the pipe. Um, we normally will, will put in some riprap or some sort of, uh, energy, um, slow down the energy in the, in the, in the water. We'll usually have that, but that's areas of concern. A lot of times, it'll still wash out until you get things established good, and so we maintain that, and then also inlet areas of pipes, too, we'll take care of. Uh, property owners, they're responsible for water drainage onto and off their property. As long as it's not coming from our street and all that, um, they're responsible for that. Drainage channels on their property not coming from a county maintained outlet pipe. So, it could be water drainage between two properties or maybe something in a backyard. We can't take care of anything like that if it's outside of our jurisdiction. Drainage easements on their property that are not part of the county stormwater conveyance system. So, if you go look at a subdivision plat, uh, they're littered with all kinds of drainage easements, usually towards the back of a lot, or maybe where there's a known drainage channel or whatever. If it's not tied to our stormwater sewer system, we cannot take care of that. It's outside of our jurisdiction. We get calls sometimes about, you know, like, the creek behind my house is washing out my yard or whatever. We can't do anything about it. You know, it's, it's unfortunate, and, uh, but we cannot go out and fix that. And, um, creeks and ditches and backyards, just mentioned that, so that's, you know, the, we, that's, if, if there's a creek or a ditch and, you know, water's running through it, maybe doing some damage to the yard, that's the property owner's responsibility, assuming it's not coming from one of our pipes. You know, if it is coming from one of our pipes and we can identify that, you know, that, that pipe's causing the damage, we'll take care of it. But what I'm mostly talking about is a larger creek or something that runs through several backyards. That is the property owner's responsibility. And then privately installed inlets and pipes, there are some that are done, um, done by the homeowners or whatever, and they are responsible for those. Common calls from citizens that we cannot, uh, the county cannot address, we get calls where the, the creek's washing out my backyard. Those are pretty common. We can't address that. My neighbor's gutter drains are directing water onto my property. That's a matter between those two, two folks, and we can't, uh, do anything with that. We don't have jurisdiction there. And a lot of times, we, I think we get calls, uh, when it rains, my backyard is a swamp, and it stays wet for a long time. Again, if, if it's not directly tied to any of our stormwater systems or anything like that, that's the property owner's responsibility to take care of. Uh, some common issues we see, uh, with residential runoff in residential areas, um, yards are not graded to account for proper wa, water runoff. A lot of times, as the homes are being built, um, it's, uh, it's hard to know exactly what stormwater's doing and let you actually see it, and the best time to go out and check things is when it's raining pretty hard. Uh, sometimes things get graded and water changes and the direction changes, and, uh, that's a common, common thing we see. Drainage ways change from original, and we see this a lot. We might even do it on some of our projects. If you take a channel that was maybe, you know, ran through a property, and the channel meandered and was about 200 feet long, and you straighten it and make it 100 feet long, that's gonna cause problems. Uh, it's gonna cause head cutting, it'll cause washing out, uh, of your yard and other things. So, that, that's a common problem. Um, I actually have it on my property from something done years and years ago. So, it's a common thing that, that happens. Gutter drains not directed far enough away from homes, see that a lot. Construction site impacts neighboring properties. Erosion control not put up like it should, causing some, you know, um, property stripped of the tops or the, the grass and whatever building the house. That increases more runoff, and so we see some issues with that. And then permanent erosion control measures not adequate. What I mean by that is, uh, when you put a pipe in and you put in some riprap to slow down the water as it leaves, uh, we see sometimes where maybe that rock's not big enough to control the velocity and lead to it, it could cause more erosion, more problems. So, um, we've seen these a lot. We get a lot of these calls. Even though we can't help a citizen directly, in some cases, we're more than happy to go out and meet with them, point out some things that we see, and offer some solutions. And generally speaking, we've had good success with that, uh, just, you know, being willing to, to visit with people regardless of whether we have the jurisdiction or not, just trying to help out people the best we can. So, that's all I got. Does anybody have any questions about anything?
I was just looking at the map, and the MS4 area is just the area in red. That's the urbanized area.
So.
And the rest of the gray stuff is?
The red is the urbanized area. That's defined by the census.
Okay, so that's where the prod- Okay, so that's where the projects are going on, and we're reporting about today?
But then we also have the, the buffer boundary around that too. When we did the ordinance, we had a...
Okay, yeah.
...buffer around that area.
I do remember that, too.
Yeah, the map, it's actually on, it's a little hard to find it on the website, but it's actually there.
I didn't have any problems finding it.
Yeah, that's, that's...
I got the stormwater ordinance on there, and then the map is right there. Just go through the public works, so...
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking at that.
So, timely with what we had last night, and I don't think we've gotten a whole lot of calls yet, but our crews have been out looking at things, and, but usually they'll start coming in. So, we'll address it like, kind of like what I explained here.
Could have been a lot worse, though, yeah. Always got to be optimistic, positive.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I would credit the public work staff and, you know, our program over the several years to improve some of these areas. So, had we not been proactive going back 15, 20 years to address some of these things, we'd have a lot more problems today. So, it's an ongoing process, and the ones that we did 20 years ago, and are in our good, good shape, we tried to design them for the more long-term, but, you know, there's always a chance that, you know, things have to be replaced as time goes on. So, it's an ongoing process, it just doesn't stop, you have to constantly be doing it.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, do we want to keep going, or do you need to be somewhere, or...
I don't specifically need to be anywhere.
Okay, then we'll keep moving down. Discussion of vehicle for the facilities department. And this goes back to replacing the vehicle that Jordy is driving. I think we allocated like $35,000. You can't get anything for $35,000, but we found one under state contract at Drewings that's a Chevrolet Colorado for $40,000. And they're actually holding it for us.
$40,000, and then we'd like to add some Rhino, Rhino lining to the bed for another $550, and then floor mats for another $100 bucks. Jordy had asked for a tonneau cover, but tonneau cover's like $650 bucks, and I don't know how much we really use it, whether it's really worth the money or not, so... It's not a bad price.
We had originally thrown...
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five hundred as the...
We had originally thirty-five, and I think you all bumped, bumped it to forty.
I think we were looking at, at one of the small Mavericks, but...
Yeah.
Those, the city, I think, is using some of the Mavericks now. They're not, they're not really what we need.
This would replace the vehicle that, that you, you used to have...
Right.
That Public Works put the bed on it, is that the one?
That's it.
Yeah, okay.
Public Works had it, then they gave it to me, and now Jordy's been driving it, and then Hale got it last night, so...
Well, he's had trouble, electrical issues, and...
It's on his license.
It's a, it's a fine classic truck. Not...
One will put it in there, and we're...
That's fine.
I just don't see the $40,000 on here, is what I was looking for.
It's...
On here?
Throw it on this.
Oh, well, hell, scratch that out, and let's put thirty-five on there. So, that's basically their offer is that $40,000, that's handwritten on there?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. And that includes the $299...
Admin fee, or whatever that is.
Yeah, whatever, so...
Jessica had worked, had helped with this.
I gave him the contract, what dealerships were on contract, and then I think Jordy kind of took it from there.
I would consider the tonneau cover, too. I've, I've got one, and it's absolutely wonderful, because you can put stuff on there to, you don't have to worry about if it rains, if you've got some equipment on the back of it, so that's just something that you might want to reconsider. I don't know, that's up to you all. If you don't want it, then I'm going to leave that up to you. But you can, you can throw stuff on back of there, and don't worry if you go to one building, and then all of a sudden, a pop-up cloud, and...
Six fifty...
They're pretty nice, so...
Six fifty, it's a soft tonneau cover, it's not the hard one, but it's...
Well, the soft one, you can roll the way up to the cab then and haul stuff easier, so I, if they're going to be hauling trash and stuff with it, which, or machinery to, to work somewhere or something, the floors, whatever, I, it's just something, I'm okay adding that if you want that.
It's up to you guys.
I think that, I think that cover is, is a good idea. I, I actually prefer, whatever you want, but I prefer the, the back, backflip harder one, but whatever's good for you.
I can get a price on that, I can get a price on that.
It's closer to a thousand, I think.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, that's what I've got, that fold up, but it doesn't go all the way to the cab, so you may not like it as much, because you'd have to, if you wanted to put trash cans on there, or several of them, or...
Really, it's, I parked next to one of these at the store the other day, that's a fairly good-sized pickup truck.
It's a nice one.
It's a four-wheel drive crew cab.
Should last us for a while.
Well, that's another point there, is that we don't buy these and then just in four years trade them out like they're pursuit vehicles or something that can't have the high mileage. I think that maintenance and Public Works and them, they get a lot more time out of it, so I, I don't mind the investment in it for now.
Well, roughly what was the, the Rhino?
Rhino lining was $550.
Okay. Floor mats were...
Floor mats were $132. Tyler was supposed to send me that over on...
And the, the cover would be another 600, Jeff? Roughly, seven...
Six fifty for the tonneau cover.
I'm trying to find it, I don't...
What if I made a motion to pursue the purchase of the, of the 2024 Chevrolet Colorado at a $40,000 cost from the dealer, and could add options of Rhino floor mats, tonneau cover up to $1,500?
That's fair.
Not to exceed $1,500, let's put it that way.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You know, like I said, I think the truck's already here, so it's not one of these where we have to wait months. Okay. Discussion of lighting for Prenger Center parking lots.
I got a call last week from Jeff down there saying some of the lights on the west side of the parking lot weren't working at night. I had Meyer go by and look at them, the wires are melted up in the heads all the way down the pole, so I'm going to say it probably got lightened at some time. But it's, I think I sent you all an email earlier this week, plus I gave you one today for $37.26 to furnish and reinstall the four light poles hits down at Prenger. That is on a contract.
Stay me from asking the question.
No, lighting, we need lighting down there. We also need new flags.
Yes, they're ordered. Everywhere, the storm took out a bunch last night.
So, do we have a...
You just, if you'd like, just to sign it.
Okay, I would... Oh, I'm sorry, I got it. I'll make a motion to execute the agreement with Meyer Electric to furnish and install the four light poles at the Juvenile Center for a sum of $3,726.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion and approval of mini-split at the Prenger Family Center.
This is a split system that needs to be installed for the IT room. The other morning, we went in there, and the room was almost 92 degrees already. I know you all worked on it before by trying to put some kind of cooling system in there, but it's just not going to work. UMS came down, looked at it, recommending a two-ton split, mini-split in the closet. Original price from them was $12,798. Now that we have them on a contract, they dropped the price down to $12,298. Jill has looked at it as far as...
Jessica brought it in to me this morning.
Yeah, so, any questions?
I haven't seen a bid or whatever, so... Did you send that to us?
Um...
Twelve thousand...
Twelve thousand, two hundred...
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight dollars.
Did we bid that, or did we...
We're piggybacking off of the state contract.
State contract, okay. And who's doing that?
United Mechanical.
I thought a mini-split with a bowling term.
The way I feel lately, you're right.
What say you, Eastern District Commissioner?
This seems like a big piece of equipment for one room, but if you all went through and they came and looked at it, see what we needed?
Yeah. There's a lot, there's a lot of IT stuff in there, I wish Brian was still here, but there's a lot of IT stuff.
Right, I understand that, it just seems, I mean, it's a two-ton mini-split, it seems...
You got the IT equipment in there, and you also got a hot water heater in there, too.
Hot water heater? Why aren't we heating our hot water?
I don't know.
Sorry.
Oh, God, you know...
All right, we'll move on, I'm, I'm okay with it, so...
This is April 2nd, April 4th, yesterday is when...
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the United Mechanical Services proposal for the, the mini-split in the IT closet at the Prenger Family Center for $12,298.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we will go to our prosecuting attorney, Law Enforcement Restitution Fund. Lock Thompson, I have a copy of that if anyone wants it.
I've got copies for all three.
Oh, okay.
First page is proposed policy and procedures, and then the proposed order that you would adopt, and then the second thing is a little PowerPoint slide presentation of that.
Thank you.
But, Jill, have you seen that? Okay, I've got a copy.
Okay. I, I researched and found some ordinances.
Yeah, and we've got a mock one, I think, that we pulled from a different county that was pretty boilerplate, it looked like, so... So, Law Enforcement Restitution Fund, this is something that is prohibited, I'm sorry, permitted by Missouri law under Section 5565, and basically what it does is it levies a fine of up to $300 on someone who has been through the judicial process, found guilty of a felony or a Class A or B misdemeanor, and the court can order that they, as part of the, whatever sentence gets imposed, pay a fine to the Law Enforcement Restitution Fund. Right now, the Missouri Prosecutors Association is going around doing a study, seeing what counties do or do not have such a fund. The overwhelming majority of the answers I've seen have been that most counties do have this fund, and in this PowerPoint slide that was given to you, you can see that the monies brought in from that fund can range anywhere from, you know, 10 to 80, $90,000. I would anticipate, given the size of Cole County and the number of cases we handle, that we would fall somewhere in that 50 to maybe even $100,000 range. So, for example, last year, Cole County cleared 922 felony cases. If you were to do $300 on all that, that would be, you know, well over a quarter million dollars. However, you don't expect everyone to end up paying that, so if you cut that even down to a third or a quarter, it's still a significant amount of money that could be used to, for law enforcement purposes, to offset costs that my office might incur, that the sheriff's office might incur. You know, and I know that I've, I've spoken a few times now about trying to implement a salary schedule for the prosecutor's office, and I believe that between monies received from a LRF and the monies we currently receive from our DOC prosecutions that we do, that that would essentially cover the cost of what implementing that schedule would be. So, I know that we've had a lot of discussions about that kind of stuff, so I'm open to any questions.
But we would create a board that would oversee...
Yes, sorry, so it...
...the first one of the funds, so...
Correct, yeah, that, and that's governed by...
Two, two, and then one from the coroner.
Right, and that's governed by state statute, so the sheriff would get to appoint two people to the board, the coroner gets to appoint one person to the board, and the presiding commissioner gets to appoint two people to the board as well. And the board would have to vote by a majority as to how the funds from the LRF are dispersed and used.
So, the presiding commissioner appoints, or the commission?
The, it says the presiding commissioner under the statute.
So, be nice to me.
I'm voting for it, too.
And you'll see a lot of discrepancy when you go through the numbers, the size of counties, things like that. I think a lot of that can be attributed to, different counties have different schedules for what they require people to pay into it. Our proposed schedule would be $300 for a felony, $100 for a Class A misdemeanor, $50 for a Class B misdemeanor.
And, but ultimately, that's up to that five-member...
It is, yes, how that gets used.
How, not only how it gets used, but at the, the rates that are charged?
Um, that's actually a good question. I, I suppose it would be, they, they would come up with that matrix, or it could be, well, if you set the schedule itself, I'm not sure if that's the judge, or if that would be the, that board. That's a good question.
Just, just a rough and dirty look at St. Charles County, for instance, the number of cases and the number of dollars, they must have some rather, they're not at the $300 level, or they're not collecting $300...
Either they're not at the $300 level, or they're not really enforcing the collection of that money.
Right. And some of these folks who would be subject to the, the fee are destitute, they're...
Sure.
They're incarcerated.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, you would not expect to see a 100% payment rate or anything like that.
I think we chatted about this just briefly, if, if they happen to hit the lottery and they haven't paid, then they do pay.
Right.
And if they have a big tax refund, and they hadn't paid, they...
You could do tax intercepts on individuals if they're not paying.
And was this, did a prior commission, county commission once address or discuss this some time back?
Yes, I, I was talking with the sheriff this morning, he said we had, and I don't really remember why, but, you know, to me, I'm looking for any source of, of added revenue that we can, we can collect, and...
So, you know, add another tax to the people that are in court, probably can't afford it anyway, because I don't, it's...
I think it's only if they're found guilty.
Fine for someone who's using our taxpayer dollars to prosecute them.
Yeah, it's...
I thought there are already court costs and restitution and fines on stuff, so what are those for?
Well, court costs go to the court. Fines go to the court.
Fines go to schools.
Schools.
Yeah.
Restitution goes to, if there's a monetary amount owed to the victim.
So, the circuit clerk says that they make money for us, though. So, where do they make money for us at?
That's a question for... That's a question for the circuit clerk.
Okay.
But it, it wouldn't apply to like traffic offenses.
Correct, it doesn't.
And, and so it's mainly, it's, it's.
Yeah, it only A and B misdemeanors or any felony.
Yes.
And those misdemeanors go to C, D, E, and F, or how do they go?
No, it's A, B, C, D for misdemeanors, A, B, C, D, E for felonies.
Okay.
And you're found guilty.
And yes.
Yes, and you're found guilty.
Or you plead guilty, there has, I mean, obviously, case can't be dismissed, and then you say, oh, by the way, you owe this money to the, the fund, you can't do that.
Can I just say something real quick? The basic court fees go eighty, twenty.
Yeah, there's, so that way they can.
Basic court fees go eighty percent to the state, twenty percent to the county, so that's, we only get twenty percent of the base court fees.
Doesn't seem fair.
Well, court's paid all by state.
I know, I know.
Start that argument. Yep.
I, I'm inclined to, to go for it, um, and, uh, some might argue it's a tax, but it's a tax that I don't suspect anybody in this room will have to pay if they behave.
Why is there about looking at me?
I, I, I agree with, with the Western Commissioner, I think.
So, did you, you gave them a policy on how to spend the money, too, or, 'cause all I have is the, all I have is the statute.
Well, I mean, no, it basically just goes by that, it's.
So, the board would decide?
The board, the board determines how.
Here's.
I mean, I suppose, like, if you needed something, or if I needed something, we could go to the board and petition for an amount.
Okay, yeah.
Well, we'd have to figure out what, how the board would meet, you know, all that stuff, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, in here, we're proposing quarterly meetings of the board. No, it's somewhere in here.
Do you have terms in there, Locke?
Terms like for the board members? I don't think the statute contemplates it, so I did not put that in there.
Well, it doesn't really, I bet it needs it.
Right.
In fact, I found some terms on, on some of the.
Hey, Jill, come on up and.
I found some ordinances from different Missouri counties, and some of them have terms.
Yeah.
Which doesn't mean you can't reappoint somebody, but.
Right.
Like in our other county, um, uh, committees that the commissioners appoint people to, they have terms.
Yeah, we did not put terms in here, but obviously that would be something we could do.
Well, maybe the two of us should work.
Sure, that's fine.
It, it's citizens of the county.
Correct, they can't.
And, uh, they cannot be current or former elected officials.
Right.
Current or former employees of the sheriff's department, the office of the prosecuting attorney for the county, office of the county commissioners, or the county treasurer's office. Uh, if a county does not have a coroner or medical examiner, the county treasurer shall appoint one citizen to the board of trustees, so they are, they are citizens of the county.
Right.
Who make up the board.
Right, but no specific, uh, term limit on for how long they serve, but we could, I mean, we could do that if that's something you want to do.
Well, you could reappoint them.
Right, or reevaluate it every two years or something when they're not.
What I would add in, too, is if the term expires, perhaps the person will stay on until the successor's appointed, the person doesn't want to stay.
Right.
So, you don't end up with a forum issue.
Yeah, exactly, that's fair.
Like the state.
Right.
Is, is the next step, let's just say that we want to pursue this, is the next step is that, is have a more of a definitive language with respect to.
Well, crafting ordinance for you all to put on.
Right.
Yes.
So, that's what I'd suggest we do, and maybe at the next meeting we could vote on whether or not to adopt it.
Okay, yeah, I can work with Jill on that, we'll get something to you.
Just let me know if you all want to talk about that.
Sure. Can you throw a wrench in it?
Nope, just wanted to be part of the conversation.
I mean, since some of the money could go to him, too, it's fair enough.
And part of these funds would go, I'm sure would go to the sheriff.
Well, I have two people on the board, so I can have it.
Yes, 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 yes.
I need to know something about planning it.
Yes.
That's fine. Anything else?
Okay.
That's it? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Locke.
Okay. Last but not least, approval of, of upfitting equipment for EMS Chevy fifteen hundred.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, we were advised that, uh, our Chevy fifteen hundred that we ordered earlier this year is being built and should be here within, uh, the next few weeks, um, so we've gone ahead and, uh, done some work with a vendor, uh, to provide the upfitting for that vehicle, this is all the emergency warning equipment and the things that are specific to what we need to do. If you recall, uh, this is our first venture into having a pickup truck, um, and as we've gone through this build process, we've, uh, learned some things about, uh, and uncovered some things that present some operational challenges that have led to some, some minor increased costs, um, with, with this upfitting piece, so, um, with that pickup piece, we can't store medications and other sensitive equipment in the bed of the truck because of heat, uh, and, and cooling in the, in the wintertime, um, those need to be at a stable temperature, so we did need to add in some custom-built cabinets into the backseat of the pickup truck, so we can have, uh, a steady, uh, temperature control for, for that medical equipment, so that added to a little bit of the price, and then, um, we had to add a docking station for our new, uh, Panasonic tablets that we have, um, so that was a, a little bit of an increased cost, I think altogether for the project, we're about eight thousand dollars over budget, um, but we did have savings on, on other things this year in our capital budget, so, uh, it's a net zero as far as the budget is concerned. I only have one half of this purchased today, uh, we're still doing some research on the, uh, truck cap and the utility glide for the bed of the truck, um, we're still getting some quotes back on that, so hopefully we'll have that in the next week, so this is just the upfitting, emergency lighting, the custom cabinets, and all of the wiring that goes along with this, uh, this sort of project. The vendor is nine-one-one Customs out of Olathe, Kansas, uh, all of this equipment is on, uh, a co-op contract with Independence PD, um, similar to what we did with the Tahoe that we purchased, uh, last year. Total price is nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents, uh, and just asking for your approval of that today, happy to answer any questions.
Kansas, Kansas?
Yeah, it's just south of Kansas, it's, it's in the metro, so.
What was the amount on that?
Uh, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
I misheard and I didn't think it was matching the original bid that you had sent, so. Correct. Yeah, I'm good.
So.
Yes, oh, yep.
I'll make a motion to sign the contract with nine-eleven custom for the upfitting equipment for the EMS Chevy fifteen hundred for EMS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All righty. Do we have anything else to come before the commission, before we go into closed session?
I'll make a motion pursuant to section six, six-ten point zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following, legal actions under section six-ten point zero-two-one subsection one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sam.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Bless you. Allergy time.